Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We thank you for being here this evening. Before we call our meeting to order, I'm going to invite Scott Marsh to come forward from Trinity Bible Church. Scott, would you please lead us in prayer?
All right. Let's pray. Father, I love this place and I love these people, but the reality is you love us more and you created this place for us. So may we honor you tonight as this group of people gets together to govern the rules and the ideas and the vision of this city. So I pray for our leaders. I pray we lead in wisdom and be guided by you in truth, but in courage. So Father, I pray for that. And I pray that your presence would bring peace and unity to the people here, that we would honor one another, and greater than that, that we would honor you with our minds, with our ideas, with our hearts. So Father, we praise you and we pray this in the name of Jesus tonight. Amen?
Amen. Thank you so much for being here, sir. It's now 6:30 and item two on the agenda is to call the meeting to order and announce we do have a quorum present. All council members are with us this evening. Item three on the agenda is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags that will be led this evening by Councilman Kevin Cleveland.
If you would, please stand and join me for the pledge of the U.S. and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you for that, Mr. Cleveland. Item four on the agenda is items of community interest. Mr. Hottab.
Yeah, we've got a few things. This past Saturday night at Heritage Park, we had a monster bash and so we had a cover band there and had over 4,000 people show up and a lot of kiddos that were dressed up in Halloween costumes for some activities the Parks and Rec Department put on, haunted hayride, costume contest and things like that. We do have Jack-o'-lantern nights coming up at Shandor Gardens and that'll be September 21st through the 23rd. And then there is a whiskey and wine walk that the downtown Weatherford Inc. group is going to be hosting on the square on October 23rd from noon to 7:00.
All right, council, any items of community interest? Shift down to item five on the agenda, presentations and proclamations. 5A is to recognize Scout Bradenveils for his Eagle Scout project at Camp Holland. Jacob Kirkpatrick.
Good evening, members of council. Jacob Kirkpatrick, Assistant Director of Parks, Recreation and Special Events. I'm here tonight to recognize Bradenveils for his Eagle Scout project over at Camp Holland. Got some pictures to show you. As you can see, he went above and beyond on this project. This project took 360 hours in three months' time. This is a low-lying water runoff area that crosses our hiking trail and when it rains, it's uncrossable. The 20-foot steel bridge solved that issue as well as eight tons of stone rock to help direct the water. The quality of work that Braden did and the attention to detail was incredible. It's just another example of the partnership that we have with Troop 76 and the great work that they do. We are currently working on other projects with them as well and I'll bring those to you when those are completed as well. But just want to take tonight and say thank you to Braden and his family and friends and thank you for your hard work and your dedication to this project. We really appreciate it.
Braden, could you stand and be recognized, please, sir? And not only a thank you to you, sir, but a thank you to your parents and loved ones who supported you through your Eagle process. Council, we'll go to item 5B on the agenda, which is a proclamation recognizing the 20th anniversary of the Chuck FM Morning Show. Council, if you'd join me down front. And Chuck FM folks, if y'all come up, please. Come on up here, turn around here, we'll do the presentation of the proclamation. Did you bring your readers to the bar?
Presentation?
Yeah.
No, I didn't.
The City Council, the City of Weatherford, Texas hereby proclaims October 23rd, 2021 as Chuck FM Morning Show Day, whereas the morning show first aired on October 23rd, 2001, and whereas Dave Cowley and M.J. McDaniel started the show as a community service to Weatherford and Parker County for the late Charles Beard, the station's founder. And whereas Brent Baker joined the show soon thereafter with several co-hosts throughout the years, including current co-host and my neighbor Melody Dettori, a Weatherford native, and whereas the show has covered thousands of local news events and has promoted hundreds and hundreds of local nonprofit causes. And whereas over the years, the team has presented more than 5,000 shows, and whereas Chuck and Melinda Beard continue as owners of KM QX Radio and present the station's programming as a public service on 102.5 FM, 88.5 FM and online. And whereas October 23rd, 2021 marks the 20th anniversary of the Chuck FM Morning Show. Now therefore, the Weatherford City Council does hereby proclaim October 23rd, 2021 as Chuck FM Morning Show Day in the City of Weatherford and is honored to recognize this anniversary, this team and the part they have shared and been in building our strong community. And testimony whereof witnessed my hand in the seal of the great city of Weatherford this 12th day of October 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you. Very nice. Very nice. Thank you. Just a few words to say, thanks to the mayor, the city council, city manager, everyone involved in this. I never thought it would last one year when Charles hit me up with the idea, let alone 20. And in that 20 years, many things have happened, but one thing has been consistent, we've been local. And that's football games and basketball games and baseball games. And M.J. McDaniel, I'll never forget that very first morning, she looked at me minutes before we were to go on air and she says, "What do we talk about?" I said, "Let's just talk about Weatherford." And we've been doing that for 20 years. To Brent and to Melody and to everybody who's been a part of it, my sincere thanks.
Thank you. You know, a thought that I had about this and why it kind of came to mind is that I can't tell you another community that has a community radio station. All they do is share information about Parker County, Weatherford and surrounding communities. And it's a resource that helps us be strong, it helps us to communicate with each other. And more than anything, you'll see this station step up when there's a crisis, there's an emergency, somebody needs help, there's an organization that's low on canned foods or funds, and that's what community is all about. So thank y'all very much. We appreciate it.
Come see us on the 23rd.
Love to.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks.
All right, council, item six on the agenda is consent agenda items. We have items 6A through 6L. And we do have two speaker cards for 6H, council, so I'd ask to pull that off. I'm more than happy to entertain the rest if that's your pleasure. Are there any others that you'd like to pull off? Motion by Mr. Cleveland for consideration of all items other than 6H. Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Any discussion on the items? All items other than 6H? Okay, we'll take a vote on them here momentarily. Indicate yea or nay, please, at your convenience. And those items pass 5-0. 6H on the agenda is consider adoption of ordinance O2021-55, amending the adopted municipal fee schedule for fiscal year '22 by the addition of a non-resident library services fee. I do have two speaker cards on this. Ms. Linda Klein, Linda, are you with us? Would you like to come forward now? Ms. Klein, thank you for being here. Once you get settled up there, we'll give you three minutes. And if you could, if you could start with your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Linda Klein. We live at 115 Derrick Drive in Hudson Oaks. To start, I've been a member of the Friends of the Weatherford Public Library for 25 years. I served as a past president for three years. I'm currently serving as VP Publicity. You can tell the library's my passion. I love the library. I feel very strongly about it. I want everybody to be able to use it as a public service. It's not a privilege. It's not something I feel that somebody needs to pay to use. It's provided for everyone. I'm very opposed to the idea of someone having to pay to use it. We have been fundraising for years. Our annual fundraiser is our luncheon to raise funds for the summer reading club for children and families and to promote reading and to keep up their reading skills over the summer that they don't drop so they can be better students and function better in school, thus be better citizens, make better grades. So, you know, Chris has told our board that about 50% of the usage of the library comes from people in the city, 50% comes from people in the county. I am greatly, greatly concerned that if this fee is mandated for people to pay that live in the county to use it, that it's going to be very detrimental to the library that I love and that I don't want the ability to reach people, the usage and the use of the library to just plummet. And I'm afraid that would happen. And so I'm speaking for the library, but for the library, I mean, as a citizen, but for the library, I think, is to not charge this fee. There are, I'll need to look at my notes, there are many people I feel that can't afford this. I think there's many families that they rely on the library to use the internet for their children to do schoolwork. If they're going to have to be carded and said, "If you don't pay, you get out," that's just not right. That's my opinion. I think some families may have a certain amount of discretionary income to spend and if they have that little pot and they are having to decide between paying, keeping up their cable network or paying for their kids to be able to use the library, I'm afraid they're going to be choosing TV over learning and over the usage of the library. I just, this is basically what I have to say and I would ask that you all consider upping the amount that's given to Chris for use of the library and if he needs more money, that you all consider giving him more, but not at the expense of citizens or people that are in the county because I just think it's going to be very detrimental for...
I need you to wrap up, Ms. Klein. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
We do appreciate you being here. Thank you for coming forward and sharing your comments.
Thanks for listening.
We appreciate it. David Klein. Thanks for your patience.
I'm not even a doctor, I have patients.
Patients does us all good, doesn't it? Ms. Klein, if I can have your name and address for the record, we'll give you three minutes.
David Klein, 115 Derrick Drive, Hudson Oaks, Texas. You know, the library is very important to me. Our daughter started going there when she was three years old to the children's reading program and so forth and as Linda said, she's been involved quite some time. Library is a service to the community, much like a park, and tax monies pay for those services. We don't charge someone to go to a dog park or Heritage Park. It's paid for by the city. I don't think user fees should be implemented. I believe the usage would go way down and the administrative burden would go up as well. How do we collect that money? We're going to take cash? Are we going to use credit cards? Well, now you've got PCI compliance issues, you have PII issues, you're going to have to have a database to keep all of this, there's expenses involved with all of those type of activities. And you're going to price a lot of people out of the library and for some, this is the only internet that they have. And I know most of us in this room, maybe that's, how can that be? But it is, it's for some, that's the only internet that they've got. And so, you know, much like we don't pay a separate fee for street maintenance or police, fire, EMS, it's just part of our tax base and that's what gets funded. I don't think we should have to pay fees for the library. I think the city and county should fund the library according to an approved budget and that Chris would present, but I just feel like we should not be charging people to use the library. Thank you.
Ms. Klein, we appreciate you being here too. Thank you so much, sir. Council, any questions or comments on 6H? Excuse me, it is an action item.
Could I make a clarification and maybe Chris, you can clarify this for me? My understanding is the fee is to check out books. Anyone can come and use the library. It's if they want to check a book out and they're a non-resident, that is where the fee applies. Is that correct or incorrect?
Correct. I'm Chris Ocardo, Director of Library Services. Yes, we're not going to check cards at the door. So anyone could come in, read a book, but they wouldn't be able to check out or use the internet without having that card.
That card.
It's a great question. Any other follow-up questions?
I have one more question or comment. And this year in FY '21 that we just finished up, what was the percentage according to your data analytics that was the breakdown of citizens versus non-resident citizens?
I don't have that number with me right now, but it was around 53% to 55% were non-resident.
I have one more comment, and I'll make it. You know, I'm a proponent of the library. It's my passion as well as I just think every child needs a library, every adult needs a library, every senior citizen needs a library. But we have continued to ask the county and continued to ask the county since I have been on this council since 2011 to pay their fair share. They don't even pay a fourth of what the cost is for the library. So since they turned down the contract, which was a very reasonable contract that we presented to them, since they have turned it down or refused to negotiate or any such thing, I don't think there's a choice at this point. The county has not stepped up for the people that they serve. Education is all of our concern and education is our future and the county needs to step up and pay their fair share. Those citizens in the county deserve that from their commissioners and their judge.
Any other comments on this item or questions for Mr. Carter?
I'd be curious to hear what the council has to say about the Klein's argument about parks. You know, obviously, we don't charge a usage fee for parks. People from the county use the parks, so what would your response be to that argument?
Very good question. My response to that argument is that the parks are an open place where you can't take out materials that are cost every single year that have an exorbitant amount of materials and assets in that library that are used, that are continuously used. Once you put a park in, that's your asset. The library continuously has assets that are given out to individuals to use for their education.
And there are additional fees added for uses. So Heritage Park makes quite a bit of income from outside vendors and things coming in paying all the time.
That's a great question, though, Mr. Tiscus. Any other questions or comments?
You know, Heidi pretty well covered, but the thing that I want to say is that the citizens of Weatherford pay the county tax exactly like the county residents do, but we also pay a city tax. And our city tax is what funds more than 90% of the library. You know, the budget's over $1 million a year and I may be a little off, but it's around $50,000 a year that we get from the county. And to reiterate what Heidi said, I know that every single year since I've been on, you know, it's 10th or 11th year that we've asked for an increase and they've said no. So I understand where you guys are coming from, I seriously do, but I would love to see you and other concerned people from the county go to their meetings and let them know that you'd like them to increase what they would spend at the library so we can go back to doing it the way we were.
Any other comments? Motion on the floor for approval by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder, second by Jeff Robinson. Any discussion on item 6H before we call for a vote? Let's vote on it. Please indicate yea or nay on 6H. That passes 5-0. Item seven on the agenda is regular agenda items. 7A is consider approval of resolution R2021-20, authorizing the city manager to execute an advance funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the Interstate Highway 20 Interstate Access Justification. Chad Marbit.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, going here. Chad Marbit, Capital Projects, here to present to you tonight an advance funding agreement for the I-20 Interstate Access Justification. So if you'll recall, the creation of our first tax increment reinvestment zone, TERZ 1, included a number of capital projects aimed at promoting growth and economic development. One of the projects proposed new entrance and exit ramps along Interstate 20 between Tin Top and Bethel Road, the eastbound entrance ramp here in front of Weatherford High School and westbound exit ramp near Academy and Hobby Lobby. Now, this projected timeline shows the general phases of project development as it relates to the IJ, the Interstate Access Justification. It's a critical path and a long process to demonstrate to the state and federal highway departments that ramps are appropriate and needed. The gold line here indicates where we are in the process based on our feedback from TechDOT, which indicates we could potentially have an IJR approval in the next 12 to 15 months. Now, once Weatherford has that approved IJR in hand, for these ramps, we can leverage that approval with COG, the state or other investors to move towards designing and construction on those. At this stage in the process, TechDOT is requiring us to execute an advance funding agreement, an AFA, for the programming and accounting purposes on this project. The AFA has no upfront cost to the city. It's a zero collection AFA, as they call it. It basically establishes the intent to pursue final engineering and design in the future so that the IJR we're working through can be programmed in their system. So with that, staff recommends city council adopt resolution R2020-020, authorizing the city manager to execute this agreement so that we can move forward with the Interstate Access Project.
Any questions for staff on 7A? Staff's recommending approval, it's an action item. We do have a motion for approval by Jeff Robinson, second by Matt Tiscus. Any discussion before we call for a vote on 7A? All right. You vote on 7A?
I will say that I think this is a long-needed addition to our city and it will help the traffic in and out of the high school and through North Maine or South Maine, excuse me, quite a bit. So I'm excited to see it.
Any other comments? Thank you for sharing that, sir. Let's vote on 7A. That passes 5-0. Item eight on the agenda, staff reports. 8A is an update on park dedication fees. Shannon Goodman.
Good evening, Mayor. Shannon Goodman, members of the council. Shannon Goodman, Director of Parks, Recreation and Special Events. Just want to come through and give you a staff report on our park dedication fees. Last January, we did a fee increase through council and I just kind of want to walk through what that has done for the park system and what we see for our future. Our park dedication fees, the intent of the park dedication fee is to mitigate the effect for new neighborhoods and to be able to have any... I'm sorry, let me start that over. The intent of the park dedication fee is to mitigate the effect new neighborhoods have on existing recreation facilities by acquiring land, construction of new and rehabilitating existing parks and rec facilities. That's our definition of how we use those park dedication fees. This next slide right here, I want to talk about, we increased that fee from $525, which was previously set. That was paid out during the development of a project. Our increase in January went for single families to 1164 and multifamilies to 947 and now that is collected at time of permit. So that is a difference in how those fees are paid up by developers, so it also will affect how those fees are received by us. Over to the chart on the right, we kind of look at, in 2019, we collected $95,000 in fees. 2020 was $467,000 in fees. We had a large multifamily development coming in that year, which is about a $200,000 boost in those fees. So you see those things really fluctuate a lot based on some of that. And then this year in 2021, we collected $344,550. Knowing these numbers and then knowing what we have increased our fees to, we do project to make over $500,000 each year in collection of fees for the following two, next two years. That value comes in, and I'll jump back over to the bullet points a little bit, in lieu of fees. D.R. Horton, who is developing Ranches West, chose to construct a park for us instead of paying our parkland fees, which is an area that we had identified as a new park we needed. It's south of I-20. And then that park value right now is about $300,000. If we collected fees from them, it'd be about $176,000. So we got a good value out of that and it was a park that we didn't have to develop ourselves. And then also, per that agreement, Ranches West will maintain the grounds of that parks and we maintain the structures. That way, we know everything meets our code and our standards for our public access. This is a picture, an image of that park. It is complete now and they have dedicated 1.6 acres of land to the City of Weatherford in lieu of paying their park fees. The next slide is just a different presentation of that park. It's, you know, good to note that this is our first park south of Interstate 20 and this is the first city park that's been developed by a developer for us. And so that's a big thing for us. We're really proud of this agreement and how this has turned out. The next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of our park projects that we did this year using park dedication fees. These first three slides are all rehab projects. The first two on the left represent Camp Holland. We've had Camp Holland, the history of Camp Holland is very old in Weatherford. It was a Girl Scout camp originally. Girl Scouts turned it back over to the city on maintenance. We've been maintaining it for the last 15 years, but we have never used it as a rental facility. And so we've looked at investing into it to create AD accessibility for the public. So we had to redo an entrance on it. We had a drainage issue there with a culvert collapse. Then we've started adding ADA accessible walkways and parking in that facility and we'll have this facility, our goal is to open this facility in the spring of 2022 as a rental facility, which can help us generate revenue such as our Harburger Hill and our Mount Pleasant. We can see uses of this as maybe a family reunion type of facility or a corporate retreat, but we'll also keep in mind that we're working with the scouts and we always work with those and they've been using this facility throughout this whole process, but typically their events are campouts and they're using the nature trail. So this just gives us more versatility on how we use this facility. And it was at the point, we needed to do something with this facility. It's been sitting there long enough, we needed to make some decisions and move forward with it. The picture with the gentleman power washing, that is Shandor Gardens. We've, and I've been here 19 years and we've never rehabbed any of the walk paths up there. And so what we did this year, about 90% of the walkways, we went in and pulled all that rock out in the mortar and relayed all those to make them a safe, level surface. And so we've invested in that. Over the last several years, we've had some issues with events where people tripping and falling or chairs being uneven. And so that process took us a while, but that is complete now and we have gone through and redone about 90% of the walkways at Shandor Gardens. The far right is a nature trail. We worked with the Shandor Foundation at the 13 acres behind Shandor. We created a half-mile looping trail back there. We look at opening this trail in about six weeks. We still have the trailhead to finish and it's going to be right there off the parking lot behind Shandor. And so that's another project that's new. It's just introducing another aspect of the garden and allowing people to adventure on a nature trail right here in town. Looking forward is the next slide and talking about future projects and where we can go with park dedication fees. The bottom left is a slide showing a splash pad. This is in reference to Love Street Park. We've had Love Street Park open in 2008, so it's been running since 2008. We've had repairs, minor stuff, but we are at the end of its life up there at that splash pad. So we're looking, we have consulted with the developer who helped us with Marshall Park about getting some concept plans and what a modern splash pad, what we can do to update that splash pad and look at a renovation on that park. The top left up there is a skate park. It's a concrete skate park. We do have a growing push in the community from the skaters and they do have a voice with a church group that meets with them regularly out there to look at modernizing our skate. to look at modernizing our skate park and redeveloping the skate park. And it's actually older than what Love Street was. I believe it was 2006 when we built that. And so that's another one that we're going to see. And then in the middle, in the last five years, pickleball has exploded. And pickleball shares some tennis courts up at Soldier Springs with our tennis association. They've been vocal lately about asking for facilities. And so we're trying to recognize that and take those notes. And then the final slide to the right is a representation of a sports complex, a multi-sports complex. And that's in here because it's something we discussed in 2016 when we did our original master plan, that we knew the growth of Weatherford with youth sports and adult sports is eventually going to outgrow the facilities we had. And if we're going to do something, it'd be nice to combine everything at one location. And so those slides are in here talking about what our future projects would look like. But we want all those elements to be a part of what we're doing next, and that's our Parks Master Plan update. And so as we move into the Parks Master Plan update, some of the key elements that we're looking at is we're going to evaluate the use of Cartwright Park, and that's potential development, land value, and type of use out there. The other item is conduct a feasibility and market study for a multi-sports complex. That way, we can actually have more knowledge about what that would look like, size and scale, best general location for that facility, and then revenue possibilities along with tourism impact. And then the other is formalizing a policy for prioritizing our park dedication fees. And that's a big one. Now that we've made some changes with our park dedication fees, we're going to see an increase in those fees. We're going to have the ability to use those fees to make more impact in our community and develop our park system. So we need to prioritize those based on new projects, new park development versus renovation or rehab against them parks and figure out how that system works. And there's things out there that are already spelt out. We just need to make sure that we have a policy in place for that also. This is a slide that I wanted to put in there. It did not change over this. Nope, sorry. There it is, timeline. The timeline is just to give you an idea of what we're looking at in updating our Parks Master Plan. We're looking at issuing a request for proposal this fall. We'd like to award a contract consultant in December and bring that to council. And then our goal would be to complete this master plan study by the summer of 2022. This last couple of slides are just, I want to reference a couple of big projects. As we're working with park dedication fees, we're also working with two other funds. We have the landfill royalty fund that council has set aside for the work at Heritage Park over the years. And I think it goes all the way back to 2008. And this last year, this was kind of that piece that tied everything together for us. It was the south lot down there. And we created a large-scale parking area that can be utilized for every event that takes place, whether it's the amphitheater or First Monday Events. This was very successful. I think it's been very well received. And it turned out to be a beautiful project for us, even though it's a parking lot. So that's kind of nice. And then the other is the utility fund that's been supporting the development around Lake Weatherford. Up at the top left, we have a little map indicating where those parks are located. It's something that we had built for the marina. They wanted some kind of thing to post when we started doing development out there. So we built a little map that they put on their wall out there. And we've used it kind of as a reference point when we're talking to people. 2019, when the funding was approved through utility board and went to council, we started development at the boardwalk, and we slowly worked our way around that lake. Currently, we, well, actually, in 2020, the fall, we started developing the wall, which is the lower-left picture, that large aerial shot right there. Opened that in 2021, and that long extended pier to the right is out there. It shows it, and it's been very well received. We've had a lot of use on that. So it turned out to be a really nice project. And then up in the right corner, that is the disc golf course area. Those folks have been out there using that piece of property as long as I've been here for the last 20 years. And I know several people in this audience that are part of that and have been included in that for years. So as we've worked our way around, we are on this project currently. We're about 80% done with it. What you don't see that's in the trees is there's a small restroom that's been built over there. It's almost complete. And then next to it is a pavilion that's going in. And then we'll add some amenities such as benches and tables and picnic tables. So that's kind of where I was going to wrap up with, with our large projects and kind of give you an overview of what we've been working on. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Goodman?
Just a couple of comments. One, just to remind the council, we are charging the park dedication fees and ETJ as well. So to your point, Mr. Tiscus, those are paid for all new single-family subdivisions and as they flatten into ETJ. And then the park that Shannon showed that's in Ranches West, that's actually, one of the things they negotiate is they actually maintain that. So we're not having to send folks out to mow that and everything else. So it's our property, but they do the cleaning of that, pick up the trash, do the mowing of that and everything else. So it's really worked out good for us.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Thank you so much, sir. This item does not require action, council. We'll go down to item nine, future agenda items. Mr. Otop, anything?
Have none.
Counsel. Item 10 on the agenda is citizen comments on non-agenda items. So if anybody would like to come forward this time to speak on an item not on our agenda this evening, please come forward now. Seeing none, we'll go to item 11 on the agenda, which is adjournment. Motion by Jeff Robinson for adjournment, second by Kevin Cleveland. We'll vote on that momentarily. Please indicate yea or nay. We're adjourned five zero at 7:04 PM. Thank you for your service.